Okay, good evening or good afternoon, I guess, and welcome to the June 1st, 2020 meeting of the School Committee of the Town of Foxborough. This is a momentous meeting as it is Ms. Lord's last meeting. We will get to that a little bit later on in our agenda. But in case anybody was wondering about the celebratory flowers, and we have a few more people in the room, that is why. And our first item on the agenda, we're meeting a little earlier, I should say, because we do have a conflict tonight with the Conservation Commission. So we thank Mr. Weber and the team at FCA for accommodating an earlier schedule for us today. And with that, the first item on our agenda is the COVID-19 update with Dr. Bernus.
All right. So we are on the home stretch in Phase 3 of the planning and remote learning. That is where we're really focusing on new concepts, new content. And that new content is really focused on our power standards for learning and what was most important in order to complete this school year. Obviously, we know that when we enter the school year in September, when we think about reopening, that that's going to play a part from where we ended the school year. But we have about 13 days left of school, and our remote learning has continued. We will be actually launching another survey coming up this week. It's slated to be launched on Wednesday. This survey will assess, like some of our other remote learning surveys, how things have been going. But importantly, it's going to really inform us as we move forward and if we find ourselves in another remote learning situation in the fall. We know we have a lot of planning this summer. Talk about reopening of schools here in just a second. But I'd like to just take a moment and pause and think about our seniors for the moment. They had their car parade last Wednesday and are really thankful to the Foxborough Police and Fire Department and all of our families and faculty who came out along the parade route and supported them. And then, at the same time, we had Mass Premier who allowed us to have them congregate in their parking lot before they started the parade. And it really was, it just, just bestow my heart, it really did. When we think about all of the things that our seniors have lost as far as end-of-year school activities, to see all of them parading for that stretch, which was a longer stretch, which was nice. But at the same time, it was, it just really was excited to see them socially distanced, of course, during the parade. But we are really thankful to all of those that made that possible for that. We're getting ready for graduation on June 7th, this coming Sunday, thanks to Foxborough Cable Access and all of the work that's been done from a pre-filming for graduation, as well as getting ready for our rolling processional graduation on Sunday. That will be filmed live. Folks will be able to watch that on Foxborough Cable Access. They'll also be able to watch it on YouTube and Facebook on Sunday. Our graduates will be beginning at the Ahern Middle School, and they have different times where they will arrive and then have a processional that will take them to the high school. Foxborough Cable Access will be there. So as each graduate crosses the stage, families will be able to get out of their cars, take pictures, which is a change from what we had talked about before. It will start at 11:00 instead of what we traditionally would have started at 2:00 in order to make sure that we have plenty of time for all of our families to process. And Foxborough Police Department and a school bus will be leading them to the high school as part of graduation.
I think Bevy has a question?
Yes.
Do they start at the Ahern?
They started at the Ahern.
So is this an opportunity for people if they would like to see the caravan go by to wave and cheer them?
They could watch them go around the Common?
They can watch them as they're going down. We wouldn't want them at the Common.
So where?
If they're along South Street, if they saw. But as far as spectators at the high school, we're not able to have anyone at the high school. It's only families of graduates if they're along South Street. I know that-
Mechanic Street, too.
And Mechanic Street as well.
There's a lot of street in between the Ahern.
So we could walk up and watch them just to wave?
Yes, absolutely. I know that for the parade, it was, the Foxborough Police Department didn't want people congregating around the Common for safety reasons.
Right.
So-
It's harder to social distance there, too, than it is on a street where you can really spread out.
Absolutely, right.
But I do think it's a great point, Bevy. It's an awesome opportunity to make this a memorable and unique experience for our graduates. And the community can really come out and show them the love and support that we all feel for our seniors and give them a very different experience than they otherwise would have had. So I hope that people will take your very good suggestion and, you know, come out and clap and cheer, make a sign and wave to them. It meant a lot last Wednesday when they had their senior car parade. I think the kids were amazed by how many families and little kids were out on their front lines-
And signs.
And signs. And it was such an outpouring of love from our community, and I think it was greatly, I know, because I have a senior, that it was greatly appreciated by the senior class. So thank you for bringing that up. It is a great opportunity to make this a memorable occasion for our kids.
Just could I double-check the time for those who would like to see this? Do they leave at 11:00 a.m. from the Ahern?
It'll probably be 10 of 11 when the first group leaves the Ahern.
Okay.
So-
And you'll hear them coming down Mechanic Street because we are going to get an assist from Foxborough Police and Foxborough Fire, and also they'll be playing pump in circumstance-
At the Ahern, yes.
At the Ahern.
Oh, great.
So you should hear them. If you live along Mechanic or south or near the Common, you should hear them.
I heard the senior parade the other day from my house on Granite Street. The sirens were so long.
I think all the fire trucks were in the parade, so it doesn't surprise me.
It sounded like it.
So, continue.
Sorry.
No, not in any- No, this is important.
Absolutely, it is. You know, in any questions?
Dr. Bernus? I just have one other question.
Please.
I'm sorry, around the timing. So we know that, does St. Mark's have a service that's being impacted on Sunday morning?
They-
That's a good question.
They are not from-
They haven't gone back.
My understanding is they have not gone back.
But St. Mary's does have an 11:00, so-
11?
Yeah, there's nine and 11, I believe.
St. Mark's is still remote.
Okay. I think, so we should just let St. Mary's know because if they have an 11:00 service-
And we've been meeting weekly with Chief Grace and Deputy Chief Noonan as well, and all of these plans for all of the logistics that you can imagine-
Right.
-to be able to have this safe and smooth and enough time to be able, like now, to be able to have families to be able to take pictures when their graduate crosses.
That is an excellent point.
But that actually came up when we were meeting with, I forgot his title, Deputy Assistant-
Deputy Chief Noonan.
Noonan. That did come up.
Okay. They had a very low turnout yesterday, at both of the services yesterday, but hopefully that will pick up for them, so just so that they make their congregation aware.
Absolutely. We wouldn't want to conflict with any of the local services at all and impact people being able to get home, so-
This little strip is very popular on Sunday mornings.
No, that's an excellent point as well. I think, you know, a lot of this planning started before church services were back up and running. And no less, Sunday was the first one at St. Mary's. So that, thank you for raising that. And I'm sure we will check and make sure that St. Mary's is fully apprised, and I don't know if the Bethany is up and running yet.
Not yet.
So that they won't be impacted by this.
No more things to reprise.
Okay. Or any other of the churches in the area as well. It's a good point, thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, no, those are all really good questions. So that's the part two. The part one with all the prerecorded speeches by all of students that have speeches and parts within graduation, that will be aired Sunday evening at 7:00. And then afterwards, Part 1 and Part 2, although you can watch live, are graduates crossing the stage and receiving their diplomas. It will all be put together in a final video and will be released a few days later. So we're just, as far as Mike Weber and Paul Beck, just cannot thank them both enough for all of the time that they spent with all of our students as they've come in individually and done so many different parts.
Hours and hours.
It really has. Between Scholarship Night and Class Night, so our Senior Scholarship Night will be aired tomorrow night at 6:00, and then on Thursday, Class Night will be aired at 6:00, so you can watch those. And it's at the same time, so hopefully to bring a little bit of, if they were sitting there in person, which we so wish that they could be. But we're trying to make it as memorable and as special as we can, and we sure couldn't do that if it weren't for the fabulous Foxborough Cable Access.
And those are also live streams, so-
They're live streaming YouTube-
Parents, family members.
Facebook, all of those, and then on the Foxborough Cable channels, so anyone can watch. As far as other updates, besides those nights that are coming up, the, one of the latest announcements coming out from the Department of Education is that they have, based on the school closure, the competency determination for MCAS for our high school students when they take the Science MCAS, it's typically biology for us. They are waiving that, if you will, for the junior class, the sophomore class, and the freshman class going forward. Our current eighth graders would still, at this point in time, have that competency determination. But they have, at this point, they're taking what courses that students are doing and looking at credits for that.
So this year's freshman class isn't, they've just taken biology, but they're not going to take the MCAS-
They will not, they are going to be exempt from it.
The sophomores who took it last year but might not have passed it and would need to take it again, they don't have to take it.
Correct.
And same with the juniors.
Yes. It's the class of 2024, our current eighth graders, that when they enter ninth grade next year, then they would be expected to participate in this science, technology, engineering test.
Brent, do you have a question? Brent?
Yeah. One, I'm so delighted that the state did the right thing on that point. I think it is the, I'm very appreciative, selfishly as a science teacher I am. But this is more of just a smaller follow-up, and I'm leaning on Allison and Amy's connections with Desi. Are they all, is there any follow-up talk of the John and Aviio Adams Scholarship? Not that that's a ton of money, but it's, you know?
There was some guidance that students will still be eligible for those scholarships, but I don't think the particulars are out yet, right?
Right. I don't remember the specifics, but it did address that, yes.
They're not dropping it, though. That's TBD.
Correct.
That's enough for me.
And that's the Koblak Award as well.
Okay, thank you.
So as far as remote learning, mentioned kind of at the beginning, we have about 13 days left of remote learning. We will continue. We will be launching a survey to assess some of the survey questions we had before. We'll have some new ones on there. And then we are looking for, we're looking towards September when we think about reopening. If we find ourself, which is very probable, in another remote learning situation or where we're out, we're exploring different funding mechanisms, particularly the CARES Act money to come in to move towards one-to-one. So then we would have technology devices for all of our staff and all of our students, which would be a game changer for us in September if we are in a remote learning situation again. So that survey will go out. It's going to look at not just the remote learning, but social, emotional, and some planning. At the same time, when we think about reopening in September, we have launched a steering committee and many subcommittees in planning for September. We don't have any guidance at this point from the Department of Education. We've been told that there will be some preliminary guidance that comes out in mid-June, but at the same time, it's very data-driven, and things are going to change. But we're going forward with our planning, with our steering committee and then subcommittees. Just to kind of give you an idea, our subcommittees are School and Facility Operations, Transportation, Health Wellness and Safety, Academics, Teaching and Learning, which would go towards particularly remote learning specifically, Technology, Whole Child Supports with Social Emotional Learning, Personnel, obviously, Auxiliary Programs that would include Extended Day and Athletics. So these are smaller subgroups. Each one of them has a lead that is one of us and some other administrators within the district. We will, we've started now. We will continue to plan all summer long, seeing what changes. And we don't, we don't know what it will look like in September. There's a lot of uncertainty, and I think about in the Globe article that was in the paper on Saturday, Tom Scott, who is the Executive Director for the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, his comment was that for us, it's like playing badminton in the middle of a windstorm. And it's just a lot of uncertainty, but we are planning. We want our students back, and we want to have them back in a safe environment. So a lot of work has already gone into that, but we will continue and be planning with all of these subcommittees all throughout the summer.
So do you, so our next meeting in a couple of weeks, will we have an update on where that is and a target for how we're approaching it? I mean, because one way we do this in areas of ambiguity is we plan for the worst possible case.
Correct.
So if we make that assumption that we're going to be in the same mode in September that we are in right now and start, it's easier to pull back or to release, I guess, some of the hold than it is to try to put some holds on that we hadn't planned for. So in another couple of weeks at our next meeting-
It's actually three weeks.
Okay, so will we have a, thank you, yeah, my dates are all off at this point, so.
It's three weeks only because I don't mean to interrupt because of the town elections and town meetings.
Right.
So we'll meet again on June 22nd, but good question.
I'm lucky, I remembered it was Monday today, so it was.
So we'll be planning for different scenarios and what those scenarios look like exactly. That will take us the summer-
Okay.
-to really iron out the details and, again, taking guidance that we get from the state. But for instance, if we're back physically, but we have certain, you know, guidelines and protocols that we're following, and then at any point, if we were to go back out because of, you know, in a remote learning situation. Or if we're having to go in and we're having to think about what you've seen in a lot of the papers, social distancing, you can't have as many students at one time, and how that might impact schedules. So those are the kinds of things that we would be working on this summer.
Right.
As far as reporting out on the 22nd, we'll share the data from the survey with you that will help in planning, but as far as specific details, that would take us through the summer in order to plan for those different scenarios. And then we would, of course, be communicating anything that we know at any time during the summer as well, because we know that it clearly impacts families.
To us and to families.
Yes, absolutely. But to your point, we are planning for worst-case scenarios, and there have already been quite a few conversations. The purpose of the subgroups is to really get into the weeds about the level of specifics that would be required to execute those plans. But the, you know, the 30,000-foot view is already on the table, thinking about A, B, C, D, and E, and what that would look like, and who are the right stakeholders. So that was really the purpose of the subcommittees. Bring the experts to the table, that will be most helpful in planning. And there is a little bit about summer related to academics that we're going to talk about later as well, but I think Brent has another question.
Brent, did you have another question?
It's exactly related to what Amy and Allison were just talking about. And I guess my follow-up on that is what needs do you see in terms of teacher involvement in that planning? And I know that it's all pending those meetings, but the potential for any professional development that may be needed to be more, whatever plan comes out of that, or whatever tiered level plans comes out of that, will, I'm imagining, require some level of teacher buy-in, training, comfort? And I guess I'm asking Allison and Amy, do you have enough runway? Do you have any runway to pull some of that stuff off or get training done prior to-
So we've actually had our regular meeting with our Professional Development Committee, which is, represents stakeholders across the whole district. And as an outcome of that meeting, we talked about putting together a pretty vast collection of professional development offerings for our teachers, beginning, hopefully as soon as next week. They will be on-demand professional development, everything ranging from, you know, a five-minute module on how to improve the functionality of Microsoft Teams and integrate it with Flipgrid, through webinars, through mini-courses, all the way through graduate courses. So something like, how do you engage learners in a remote learning environment? How do you build community in a remote learning environment? Those are just a couple of them that I have already in the queue. So it's just a matter of coordinating those opportunities in a way that teachers can access them when they're ready. The beauty of it is that they can do them repeatedly if they are modules that are things, there's a lot of modules around Microsoft Teams, for example, so that they can go back and build their capacity. There's been a lot of interest, which, to be honest, is a little surprising, thinking about how tired everybody is. There's a lot of interest in being able to go into the year in a more proactive way rather than being in the reactive mode that we've been in. So we are happy that we feel like we will be positioned better in the fall, and we're happy that the teachers are eager to position themselves to be as effective as they can be if we are in that situation again. So, yeah, that is well underway.
So, okay, so if I'm just recapping a bit, I'm hearing that you have some windows of time prior to the end of school, which is, I imagine, speaking for folks that I know and myself, working outside of the district, those would be very well received, because I could say almost to a person, I know no faculty member in any district that I know who would like to repeat what we're currently doing now, because everybody, because we're educators and hopeful, feel like, you know, we could do it better. So if we can get some of that PD in prior would be amazing. Do you envision PD opportunities during the summer, to the extent that teachers want to take care, handle that? And, I mean, do you also envision some of that going into those pre-start-of-school faculty days in August, if the committee deems that that's necessary?
Maybe I wasn't sorry and totally clear, the page-
Do you envision this happening during the summer?
It goes all the way through the summer.
And do you envision it happening in August?
Yep, on-demand, whenever they want throughout the summer, including graduate course opportunities. There is one graduate course opportunity that's coming out nationally that will be remote, that I don't think we'd normally get access to, that is all about everything we've just experienced. It's been written in response to this, so we're excited about that one. We'll also have our regularly scheduled professional development days in August, where we'll have some of that time. But we all agree that August is too late. They want to be able to use the summertime to build that capacity, which is why it will be there on-demand whenever they want to get it. And speaking as a teacher, they'll be able to track it and get their PDPs and/or graduate credit if that's the case, so. Does that answer your question?
No, it's, no, you're pushing this in the right direction. I appreciate it.
And I think to your point, Brent, when we're talking about no one is doing this well, we've not ever been in a situation, teachers, when you think about college-level teachers, I myself have college students and their professors, they had to turn it on a dime and did not know how to go and take online learning. So it's been a huge learning experience for all of us. We've learned a lot through it. And with each closure, it being prolonged after three weeks and then another, you know, four weeks, and then again, that, that made it even that much harder in having to respond to. But if we have what we've learned right now, if we're able to move into a one-to-one environment, as I said, that would be a big change for us, because you would then be able to have everyone that has access, which makes a difference for that live instruction. And then at the same time, you're much better prepared because of what we've experienced here in this last quarter of the school year.
I would add one thing, too. We've had some teachers, and I'm sure this happened in your district, too, who've emerged as experts in certain digital tools, and they've been willing to actually hold little seminars for their colleagues as well, so that they can, they call them hacks. So how do you hack this and how do you hack that? So that they can really give their colleagues the shortcuts and learn from the things that they did. And lots of people stepped up and wanted to do that. There's actually a level of energy and excitement around doing this in a better way, and they want to be really proficient at it. So I'm excited that they're excited. Any other questions? Is there anything further in the COVID-19 update?
I don't think so. I think some of the other things we'll talk about at the June 22nd meeting, which will be more about when we think about summer programming for extended school year, but at the same time, other opportunities for students to participate. But we can talk about that at the June 22nd meeting.
Brent, do you have another question? Yes?
There's just really a follow-up of what Amy was talking about. Do you feel that the working group that you're going to put in together will have, or do you all, your own professional connections have enough connectivity to surrounding districts or districts that you all find as, I guess, trusted sources of ideas to, I guess, gather and pool information from what the experience of surrounding districts has been?
Yes, I would say through multiple avenues. We have that, you know, one, you know that even, so this is, I'm in my third year of, as far as being a new superintendent, but it's a three-year program, the New Superintendent Induction Program. We're meeting weekly, and we've now focused on reopening in September. So you have all of those superintendents, where there's 42 of us, along with all of the coaches. In addition to that, we have the South Shore Superintendent Group that we meet with, and then at the same time, you have your own professional colleagues that are more right here within the Hockamock area, and then we have that group as well. So we have a lot of brains behind it, but we also know that there's a lot of uncertainty that we're planning for, and that's why we're going to have a number of different scenarios.
And I would just say, going back to what you said before about the summer, it might be worth just mentioning right now, just because it's going to go home in the report card envelopes, which will be prior to the next school committee meeting. We are, we have our typical summer in reading, math programs that we offer, and we've always offered them. This summer is obviously different. We see we have a huge opportunity to create pathways to mastery for students by offering different personalized learning opportunities. So one that is confirmed for sure is we will be offering a personalized learning platform for students, and anyone can participate. Parents will be able to sign up. It will be free. There'll be a diagnostic assessment that is very quick. It's only 12 questions. It will focus on reading and the skills within the literacy domain, so that students can work at their own pace and get what they need, so that they can be where they need to be to start the next school year. So we're very excited about that. Parents will be able to print a full report card at the end of the summer that will show them where the students are coming out in alignment with the standards. And we're planning another opportunity that's a little bit more contingent on grant funding that actually won't go home in the report card, so we can talk about that on the 22nd. That'd be great. I need a little more time to get that one together.
Allison, what grade levels is that first program that you are talking about?
In math, it's K through 9, but we may possibly have something for 10th graders as well. I've been working with Sue Carl on that. Just knowing that we want to solidify the algebra and geometry pieces because they're so important moving ahead. And then the ELA platform actually is K to 12, although I haven't spoken with Shannon about it yet, because it's, literacy is different at the high school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions before we move forward in the agenda? Anything else in the update?
Nope, I think we've covered it.
Well, we're a little bit behind, but we're going to catch up. The next item is our open public comment, and we did not receive any comments in our school committee inbox. I checked right before I left the House, and Janet said nothing had been received in the last few days, so, for open public comment. So there's nothing there. Our next item is approval of minutes, and we have before us the May 11th, 2020 meeting minutes. And I actually did have one thing on Page 2, under implications of COVID-19 on the FY21 budget. The last sentence, I believe, should say, however, out-of-district tuition and transportation costs will increase by, not to, because it increases by $1.25 million, not to that amount. It's a little bit more than that amount in total. So if we could just make that one change, I have no other corrections. Does anybody else?
I don't.
All right. Could I get a motion to approve these minutes as amended?
I move to approve the minutes as amended.
Would anyone like to second?
I'll second them.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the May 11th minutes, we have 500. Thank you very much. Moving on, we've kind of caught up a little bit, to the Social Studies Curriculum Review. And Dr. Mella, will you lead us off? And we have Ms. Susan Shea and Ms. Kristen Durico joining us via Zoom. Hello.
Absolutely. Welcome, ladies.
Welcome.
So as we all know, during the 2019-2020 school year, we've had a group of stakeholders invested in the work of doing a full review of our social studies curriculum. And you may recall that last year, in 2018, the new frameworks for history and social science were released, and the implementation plan was over two years. So the first year, there was a road tour that any social studies teachers could go to and learn more about the frameworks, because there were some pretty significant changes to them. And last year was the first year that we had sort of a soft rollout, which we thought was great to do in conjunction with the curriculum review. The team here tonight is going to highlight the major changes that are going to impact our core sequence, our curriculum, and our resources, as well as any professional development that needs to take place. I think it's impressive that even though their committee work was disrupted due to the school closure, they had already done a lot of their surveying work before. As you know, in a curriculum review, we tend to collect data from our stakeholders, we do a bunch of research, we preview potential curriculum materials. They were able to get this all done in spite of the closure, so kudos to them for doing that. I think you're going to see, reflected in their review, that there's a huge focus on global citizenship within the new standards, which is something that we have in our plan and we have been working towards. So the curriculum will actually move us closer to that goal. And there's a lot about argument in there. You've heard at the table before, things about claim, evidence, reasoning. You've heard, you know, in the news, students need to be great consumers of information and be able to analyze the credibility of resources and things that they hear. That's all baked into our new standards. So I know they are very excited about them. And without further ado, oh, the other one thing I wanted to say is you saw this year, the Ahearn Congress came before us as one of the teaching and learning highlights with Mr. Williams. That was a result of these changes in the curriculum and having more of a project-based approach. So you're going to hear more about those changes, and I know you have the report and the slides in front of you. So with that, I will turn it off to Sue Shea, who's our K through eight social studies, ELA Title I Curriculum Director, and Kristin Durico, our new social studies department head from Foxborough High School. So I'll turn it over to you, ladies.
Great, hi, everybody. It's nice to see everybody here. Before we sort of jump into the brass tacks of the work we did, we felt that it was pretty important just to share an overview of the foundation, the vision and the foundation of the work behind the new framework, so that you understand what drove our work today. So when we look at, when we look at the vision on that first slide, is that slide up? I'm sorry.
It's coming.
It's coming. I'm like, I don't see it yet, but all right, there we go.
The fun of the remote meeting.
There we, I know, and this is our first in front of school committee, so we definitely want to be prepared, and thanks to your patience here. This is great. So if we go to the second slide, actually, where it really lays out the vision, this vision is taken directly from the 2018 framework. And the beauty is that it really seeks to honor the past work of both the 2003 and the 1997 frameworks, but it pulls the teaching and the learning experience through the present and into the future, which is really great. And the ultimate, the ultimate goal of this is to develop the knowledge and skills in students as they begin to participate in a much more demographically diverse and culturally diverse society. And so all of the work we've done is sort of hinged on that. Let's go to the next slide for a minute. The new framework lays out ten guiding principles for effective history and social science education. We just put up a sample of five here to give you folks a flavor of the vision. So these guiding principles really reflect the vision. So people that look at effective history and social science education teaches students about the legacy of democratic government and to think historically. And I know Dr. Mello, as you look down at some of the other bullets, talked about argumentation and how all of these pieces are inherent. So students are building capacity for research and reasoning toward building logical arguments at the very bottom, engaging in data analysis and using digital tools as they pull together these pieces. And I won't neglect the piece about current events and news and media literacy, which is essential for all citizens as we develop sort of the civic-mindedness. So these guiding principles are really, were very useful to us as a team in planning to think about where we have lived in terms of history and social science and what our mission will be. So we were able to shoot some goals based on this, and then we really developed, as you can see in your report, the desired outcomes ultimately. At the end of this presentation, of course, you'll see what came to be the recommendations for this process. So as we skip on to the next slide here, we see the guiding principles sort of reflect the vision. Well, these three pillars really support the vision of the new framework, but they, more importantly, support the essential teaching and learning work that happens and will happen through, as we roll out this completely new framework in the classroom, whether it's a concrete or brick and mortar classroom, or a virtual classroom, or some combination of that, okay? I just want to quickly talk about each one. On the bottom, I see the content standards. So the content standards are just the knowledge and skills that teachers have always taught around the topic. So what is it that we're learning in social studies? What are we, you know, what are we learning in our history classes? That's not new for teachers. It's where they live as content experts. And to the right of that, the darker blue circle, those are the literacy standards. So the reading, the writing, the speaking, and the listening. And those are the essential, you know, literacy skill sets that are necessarily going to be embedded in the content that teachers are teaching so that students develop that high level of proficiency and literacy in the history content area. But we drew your eye to the top circle there, and the third pillar is the newest pillar for all of us. So as is certainly for students, many of these components in the practice standards are going to be new, and we're going to dig into some of this through professional development through the fall and all of next year. But certainly, many of these pieces are already in play in the classrooms. And this really speaks to what are the practices we need to engage students in so that we shift from, you know, reading about history to engaging all students from the pre-K to 12 experience in really becoming historians, thinking like historians, and thinking about realms of geography and economics and civics as well. So ultimately, we want to develop civic dispositions in them with the knowledge and skill base they need to engage students. And inquiry is an essential piece here, and then we spoke to that research piece. So these three circles really are not meant to be layered work, but embedded work really enhance the overall learning experience for students. So we're pretty excited about that. We wanted to share that just so that you understand this was the framework for the work of committee. All righty, so we'll go to the next slide. And so the next couple of slides are just going to show you the scope and sequence of the 2018 framework. You can read this for yourselves. It's really nice information to see where the students at Foxborough will go in terms of their social studies learning. What I can tell you is a K to eight directive is at the elementary level, there's not a huge change in topics, although there are certain shifts. For instance, in fourth grade, they're going to be taking on a lot of the exploration that used to live at the beginning of the fifth grade social studies curriculum. But you're, they're going to experience much broader depth and more specificity within each of their topics. So it definitely will involve greater planning and more fortified curriculum work, and that's part of our plan as well. The greatest change, if you want to flip onto the next slide, and I'll carry over the fifth as well, grades five through eight really reflect the greatest change in terms of how I work with teachers within the framework. Each of them has a significant shift. So for grade five, I know they're going to be getting in deeply to the Civil War, and while that was in their framework before, it wasn't, they didn't explore it that deeply. They'll get in much more in-depth, and they'll be looking at slavery, the Civil War. They'll also be diving into their new topic, which is centered around civil rights. That's a big shift for them. Grade six and seven are centered, as you can see, around ancient civilization. Those are back-to-back courses. We've done some work already with those teachers to really look at what they've already taught, particularly in seventh grade. They've been the experts in ancient civilization. And so shifting, we've done some shifting between the sixth and seventh grade topics, and they're going to be pulling from, seventh grade will pull from some of the sixth, sixth grade will pull from some of the seventh grade. And what we've done is come up with a spoke that is, that is going to be uniquely ours in Foxborough to meet the needs of our specific students. And so the recommendations around resources, shifting, sharing, and purchasing resources will come out of those necessarily. And finally, the biggest change, of course, I think you all know, is the introduction of the civics course, which is the whole grade eight social studies experience now. I'm so pleased and so proud of the work that our grade eight teachers, Dave Fudge and Dan Williams, have done over the last, really, two years preparing this curriculum and then this whole school year, teaching it for the first time and leveraging what resources they've had at their fingertips while waiting for sort of a core set of materials that can really support all eighth graders' experience year to year. And so we're really excited about that. And I'm going to turn it over to Kristin to talk about the high school.
Hi, thank you. So because the eighth grade curriculum has now moved into the civics, the entirety of the world history program has moved into the high school level. Prior to this, the eighth graders received World History I, and then our ninth graders got World History II. So looking at our, what's best for our department, looking at what other districts are doing and how they are approaching the shift of merging the two courses together, we have decided to put the World History I into sixth century to the present into the ninth grade year in order to maintain the consistency for the U.S. History I and II programs. Our U.S. History I and II programs in the 10th grade also include our very successful AP program. So we wanted to make sure that that trajectory of our core courses remain the same. So coming up in this new school year, we will be merging those two curriculum pieces together and utilizing the document that the state has provided for us. As far as the United States History Program, we do need to do some movement and adjusting because of the changes that the state has made in the different time periods that exist. Our high school electives already reflect very much what the state is recommending. We already have AP Government as a selection for our students. We have Civil Liberties and Law, which would also be counted as our U.S. Government and Politics. We offer Economics. We also offer Contemporary Issues, which is a news and media literacy course. And we, yeah, and we also offer, we don't have anything on news and media literacy. I'm sorry, we have our Contemporary Issues, which covers that. Personal financial literacy can be found with John McCabe in the Business Department. So the state, along with creating the eighth grade curriculum and the eighth grade course, has asked that civics really be implemented sort of district-wide, pre-K through 12. But the law that was put into place in 2018 talks about how students in grade eight and especially, and then again in the high school, shall have not less than one student-led, nonpartisan civics project. The state in October gave out a guidebook that is sort of informing our decision-making and informing and leading the ideas that that civics project should take place. In grade eight, they perceive the civics product, project as being very scaffolded, very skill-based, making sure that students have an opportunity to utilize those skills in that action. In the high school, they should have one opportunity in one place that would be giving them the opportunity to more independently exhibit those skills and create a project. If you could go to the next slide, please. The state has defined the student-led civics project according to those bullet points right there. If we look at the goals and the ideas that are coming out of the civics-led project, they highlight the civic knowledge, the skills, the dispositions, which Sue was referring to earlier in the three pillars. So the civics-led project is going to be not a community service project. They make very clear distinctions that it's not a one-time project. It's not a food drive that takes place at Christmas. It's going to be a systemic sort of change. So instead, it's going to be the students are going to create a community food bank that is going to proceed, proceed following those students actually leaving their project work. We have seen already in the high school, the great work of the English Department bringing in some PBL projects, and the civics project that the state is asking the social studies work to do, the social studies department to do, is very much in line with that sort of thinking and that sort of building of project-based learning. Next slide, please.
So that's sort of an overview that sort of led to our recommendations. And I know Kristin talked about some of the work that's been done at the high school, and again, at both the middle school, particularly at the middle school, some partial rollout. And so that continued work will be reflected in our middle recommendations. But I need to skip to elementary recommendations first because Dr. Mello had mentioned at the very beginning that we were very fortunate to have completed most of this committee work while we were still in the physical building, and Kristin and I were able to continue working with our teams to bring this work to fruition. The one gap area, and it was the minor gap area that can be addressed next year, would be grades, the elementary grades in particular. We're going to be not looking for a core set of resources there, but more supplemental material. So I am going to talk specifically to that and what that means for the elementary going forward. But let's start with curriculum and instruction. They're in the center of the table here because they're the heart of what we do every day for sure. We were in a fortunate position, you know, with this being a curriculum review year for social studies, that we had a new framework to operate from. So when there's a new or revised framework, it's often a no-brainer because there's significant change, and we need to be responsive to that change. So in all of these recommendations, elementary, middle, and high school, you're going to see some common themes around curriculum and instruction or professional development and resources because of the response to the new framework. So at the elementary, certainly, there was an identified need. You've got these summary reports from the survey data in front of you, but to develop new curriculum documents. So there's new content. We need new documents, but teams really needed it in a better, more accessible form. And they also are looking for a piece and guides embedded around that. And the development of common assessments, and those assessments will be embedded within those curriculum documents as well. When we look at, we talk about full implementation of the framework for sure. That's going to be the case across all grade levels. And then at the elementary, that middle point under instruction, they really wanted to find ways to identify best and worst practices for high engagement rather than sort of just carrying students through social studies content. And I think that really speaks to those practice standards that they'll be sort of unpacking, working through, understanding what that really means and what it really looks like in the elementary progression and through the middle school and high school as well. So with those core findings, we break it out to professional development. And so we, the first thing we need to do is work with teachers to really look at this new framework in depth so that they understand all the components. And to the point where Dr. Mello spoke about global citizenship, across the board, we'll be developing a common definition of that and examining what those instructional methodologies are. We're lucky enough to have an expert in district, Ina Wazaluski, who is our global citizen, global citizenship expert. So we will certainly be tapping her and other resources to fortify that area. And then, of course, looking at what are the high, high utility tech tools and practices that can really elevate the overall social studies practice and instruction? So that's one of those recommendations. But our big piece, of course, is under resources. So as I had mentioned, at the elementary school, we are not going to be looking for a purchase of any core resource. Everything will be supplemental, and we're going to look at working, starting over the summer, having teams start to inventory, look at existing resources, considering the shifts in the framework, what materials we already have that could be shifted or shared in response to that, so we don't need to spend unnecessarily when we have some quality core resources in-house. Certainly, they need to look at those gaps that exist in terms of the new material that might be in the framework so that they can determine what those future supplemental purchases might be and begin to build collections of those. Adding collections of materials that reflect diverse perspectives was a clear need articulated by the elementary team, and so that'll be something that is deserving of attention when it comes time to purchase those supplemental materials. And so that's sort of the elementary. I think it's, a lot of it necessarily comes from the change, but it's a result of teachers having their voice in where those needs are. Go on to middle school. And again, if we jump into curriculum and instruction at the middle school, again, we plan to fully implement the new framework. Grade five did a partial implementation of a new unit, as did grades six and seven. They had met critically and intentionally planned what that, that early rollout would be of a couple of the topics. And of course, grade eight implemented their curriculum in full this year. We really did a partial implementation only in the places where it was necessary to ensure that as there were shifts in the curriculum from grade to grade, that we wouldn't create unintentionally any gaps in learning for students that didn't fit this. Okay? So we will continue to develop the curriculum documents that reflect and are aligned with the new framework. The civics curriculum document has been a work in progress now for almost two years. It started with the good work that the Department of Education had hosted through their civics for school districts around the state two summers ago. So that work is going to come to completion out of summer curriculum work this summer for that course specifically. And again, we'll be looking at developing common assessments under the instruction band here and accessing those high-leveraged technology tools and practices. And so if we look to the left, the PD, professional development, the middle school is where we are really seeking. are really seeking your approval for some of the purchases that we'll be making. And so should those come to be, we will be spending time orienting teachers, the newly purchased resources, and engaging in professional development directly from the public as well. I spoke to the commendation of definition of global citizenship. That's a common need that came from elementary as well. So the final piece I just want to speak about comes down to the resources. And the middle school truly was the great, we had the identified greatest need there. Grade five has a textbook. And while textbooks, textbooks are a bit of a double-edged sword because they can house both much information and not enough information. And and so there's a lot of topics students can delve into in their reading, but we don't cover the topic in depth. And so we really continue to look at the wide range of resources that can give students the best learning experience. Grade five has a textbook that is over 20 years old and it's worn and it now is outdated in terms of many important components of the new framework. So it's important that they have a core. Grade six and seven are sharing that ancient civilization experience and we customize that, as I had mentioned, what their shared curriculum will look like. So they definitely need a core, particularly because we've had a lot of change with the grade six team as well. And we want to make sure with the new people who have come on board, that everybody has equal access to high-quality materials. And of course, the civics course is a brand-new course. And so that probably goes without saying that they need some kind of core to continue to do the great teaching that they are, they are doing. So we're going to continue to look at existing resources as well. Think about what supplemental types of things can be shifted and shared at the middle school. And then when we talk about the resource of time, grades five and six have struggled a little bit with wanting to have more explicit instructional time for social studies. Grades five and six are more humanities, teach by nature as they teach ELA as well. And so they've done really a wonderful job creating these units that are so rich and well-integrated for students, but there is added content. The depth and breadth, as I mentioned, in the new framework is sizable. And so we're going to make some shifts that allow them to have the time that's explicitly devoted for that content as well. And then the last piece is just their desire for vertical collaboration time between the grades, just so that we enhance that overall middle school.
At the high school, looking at the curriculum and instruction, as I already mentioned, our ninth-grade program has significantly changed. So we need to merge the former eighth-grade program with the current ninth-grade program and put that into a one-year course. So we have significant work to do with building that curriculum. We need to upgrade, update all of the grade-level documents, our World US One and US Two, to reflect the changes that come from the state. Pace and Guides would go along with that, as well as, we would like to see a media literacy and a current events subcurriculum. We already work with current events, but we would like to see something that could really be brought in and and used more across the board. As far as instruction, we want to see opportunities for PBL, for project-based learning, in our core courses. We want to create a, an area where inquiry-based structured academic controversies are utilized and sort of vetted as a resource for all our core courses. That goes back to those three pillars, looking at those skill-based and practice-based knowledge that we want our students to have. And opportunities to teach media literacy across all courses. Again, there are places where we already do media literacy, we already incorporate media literacy into our classes. We want to just make sure that it is much more universal and much more embedded directly into our curriculum documents. Our professional development reflects that. We want to make sure we have some project-based learning, professional development. We started seeing the beginnings of that in some of our professional development days last year, but we need some direct training. Our PLC structures are going to work this coming school year at finding ways to build that civics project and that civics learning project opportunity. Global citizenship, as Sue has mentioned, in both the elementary and middle school level, that was a desired outcome and goal that was across the board. And high engagement tools, integrating our technology, I think we've learned very well in the last couple of months, that integrated technology is very helpful for in-class learning as well as remote learning. The core resources, our resources category really centers around our ninth grade. We have had the same ninth-grade resource since, I think, 1996. So our, yeah, so our textbook is ready to be updated. We have determined, because of the breadth of material, because we're trying to merge two major courses together and a significant amount of history together, that the History Alive program through TCI, Teachers Curriculum Institute, is going to be our best bet. And and we are requesting that as our core resource for ninth graders. It will give us access to instructional resources online for both students and teachers. And it's just a fantastic thematic approach that also has very rich content for our students. So it really, it really nails down the skill-based learning as well as all those those dispositions that we're helping our kids can learn from. As far as digital resources and global citizenship resources, those will be garnered through supplemental resources that we will cultivate in the coming years.
And I think I'm just going to jump in right there, too, to add on, since Kristen mentioned TCI, and I didn't name them as a publisher, that's what our seventh and eighth grade are going to be looking at. So at the middle school, we did look at two different core resources. So our fifth and sixth grade will be looking at McGraw-Hill. And seventh and eighth grade will be looking at PCI for reasons that are best fit. All of those teachers evaluated both programs at the middle school and we really looked to fit based on the gaps that they had and their needs going forward.
Ladies, thank you very much for that overview of the very thorough job that you did in your process. I'm sure that the committee probably has questions for you, so.
Well, I'm just always very impressed with the thoughtful and deliberate approach to all of our curriculum reviews, and this is no exception. I certainly, I read the entire summary report and you certainly back everything up and it's been, spent many, many, many hours doing this and and I certainly appreciate that. I guess my question for all of you is, what do you need from us tonight as far as approval?
We are looking for the core program for the high school and also the other core program that we have. Sue, which grade is the core program for, six?
So we'll be, we're going to be looking, while we're purchasing things for different grade levels, the core purchases will involve grades five, six, and eight. So seventh grade has some great things that are already in place, some resources they use currently, but they had a couple of gaps. So we're actually just purchasing some supplemental resources for them. So five, six, and eight.
So as they mentioned, and I know it was a little hard to hear at times, the TCI is the History Alive, Social Studies Alive, Geography Alive. We've used those resources for quite some time. The updated versions, some of them will be new to certain grade levels, but they obviously reflect the alignment that we're looking for. It was a little bit challenging under the conditions that we're in to get quotes and and meetings with people in a timely way that we normally do, but I think we are on track to look at those things. And the other things are supplemental, so I think we'll worry about those next year.
Do we need to have a dollar amount attached to an approval for a textbook request?
Not really. You're you're approving the material itself.
The material itself.
Obviously, as long as it falls within our budgetary value, then we can go from there with it.
And to be honest, that's been our challenge. We've been trying to get it, and we're getting really close to getting it to fit within our budget.
That's it? You there yet?
I was going to ask about budget. Yeah, I mean.
Yep. That was the next question, so thank you.
But we're good, we're getting it there, so. And the materials, because they've been vetted and used in our district before, we're really familiar with them and we feel good about them.
Does anyone on the committee have questions for Kristen or Sue?
Well, I know, I'm just going to jump in because Brent had a question that he sent to us. And Kristen and I, I think, probably can address this. He was interested in hearing about, given the weeks, this week's events with the deaths, the protests, the riots, et cetera, and the racial issues that are present, policy and our history and and all of that, and how it's impacting really students as our, our citizens, you know, certainly in our future. So what he wanted to know was, where is there room in the curriculum to address that? And where do students learn to analyze policy and practice for inequity? So inequity. So I can do that a little bit. I think there's more forward work that's going to come out of the curriculum development vertically in that area. But I think so many of the pieces we've talked about, even in terms, certainly in terms of media literacy, but current events, current events are going to be, continue to be, but I think even more so an integral part vertically through the curriculum. And I think that's one place where we can start to talk about what's happening in a way that's appropriate, certainly, to the age and development of our students. One of the, one of the pieces we put in our recommendations for professional development have to do with building teachers' capacity around having the, how to handle controversial conversations. And these are really challenging issues for sure. And so that is a natural recommendation there where the training really helps teachers guide the process with students around what are the topics that are sort of open topics, meaning that they're they're topics that we have to be discussing and there's sort of protocols for how we do that within our classroom communities, our school communities, within town and town communities and beyond that. And which topics are sort of closed, meaning they've, they've been resolved. We're not reopening things that are already resolved. And and then what are the things that are, and Kristen, correct me if I, I don't have the language, but it's sort of an off-the-table type of topic. And I know that, I don't know the protocol well. I've participated in one professional development around that type of structure, but it's something that our middle school teachers certainly have been talking about, particularly our eighth-grade teachers in the civic corps. So I see that, Brent, as being one great way to start to support all of us as teachers in dealing with these issues. Kristen, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, no, I think that across the board, and just to speak to the high school, I think there are valuable opportunities that are to be had. I think what the the state has pushed us towards, too, is to ensure that there is a significant capacity for diverse voices and ensuring that history is is not being taught from one perspective. One of the skills that, and engagement tools that we're trying to look at is the structured academic controversy, which asks students to present a position. Then they have to switch that position and then they have to come to consensus. So it's asking them to look at complex issues, using documents, using their understanding of sourcing and and the materials that are in front of them, whether or not they're a valid source, whether or not they're a biased source. And and that is really the direction that the state is going in, and that is the work that we are trying to do as we build these curriculum documents, to ensure that students have those opportunities and that they can address in a thoughtful, a productive, and a conclusive, you know, a way that they can openly talk about these conversations that are very hard to talk about. I I will admit that there are areas that are very challenging and and to build teacher capacity for them, I think, is also very necessary because these are difficult topics. But again, I think the state is asking us to do those things by giving us a real skill-based curriculum.
And I would say, Kristen, and you can jump in here, that that really, it has the interplay with the work that we've been doing in professional development around building cultural proficiency. And there'll be a nice overlap there for the teachers, that they get a little bit of a running start. I also wanted to add, and Sue and Kristen, you can back this up, we'll still have our document-based questions, like you were talking about, and using our primary resources. We'll still have our question formulation technique. All the good work that we've done in the past is not going away. This will just be enhanced and better aligned with the new standards.
Yes, I'm glad you brought the the document-based project up. That is something I actually meant to reference, that we, we have been doing that work in the past. We adopted that in the 2013, 2014 curriculum review. And that has really allowed us to bring more literacy, bring more essential questions and inquiry-based questions into the classroom. So we will be looking at where those fit in our our new curriculum documents and and what we want to keep and what we want to possibly revise.
For sure. And that that DBQ process actually starts formally in grade seven. So our grade seven and eight teachers work systematically with students around that, the document analysis piece. But the, the skills related to that certainly start developmentally in the youngest of grades, for sure. And so I think this document, this whole new framework, really ensures that we're going to have these building blocks that prepare students gradually for engaging in respectful, insightful, open-minded conversations that are developmentally appropriate over time.
Excellent. Does anyone, Brent, does that get to the heart of your question?
Oh, it does. It's.
Does anyone have any additional questions for Sue and Kristen?
I do. So I don't know actually what we're doing today. So I heard a core curriculum that's 20 years old in the fifth grade. When I read the documents that you submitted us, there's core resources in five and eight and now nine.
Yes, nine should have also been.
So you're asking us to approve generically or specifically?
No, they're History Alive, it's through TCI. They're, they're all related to the same, except for the fifth and sixth grade is McGraw-Hill. But we don't actually have our our final quotes in hand yet, but they're the McGraw-Hill program. We also use McGraw-Hill for science and math. And then TCI is the History Alive and the Social Studies Alive and the Geography Alive that we've used before.
So how specific a motion do you need? Can we authorize the purchase of four?
I'll defer to you because you've done this more than. We're already using History Alive and a number of other grade levels. That's not really a change. It's a matter of that alignment with the other grades. And with the updates that are there and then taking that into some of the additional grades. I think it's really more the McGraw textbook that you're asking for approval of because that would be a new textbook for that grade level.
But this would bring it in alignment with what we already have going on and be more of a continuum.
Correct.
Correct.
So, so the, the motion you're looking for is to purchase a resource in ninth grade or not? Because we have a responsibility to to approve textbooks purchases, correct? Am I repeating? I got my line here.
You know what? You know what would be helpful? If we just move it to the 22nd and then maybe we can see if we can have more detail on it.
To be completely honest, I think that would be very wise, since you need our full support of clarity on textbooks. I think clarity around the textbooks would be very wise for us to do, as opposed to McGraw-Hill.
And we move, and we had originally planned to have Sue and Kristen at our later school committee meeting, but when it got pushed back to the 22nd, so close to the end of the fiscal year, we were originally concerned about that. But where we do have the stuff in from TCI for Kristen, we don't have it settled yet for the middle school and the McGraw-Hill. So I think we can put a bow on that before the 22nd and have that.
I think that would be wise. I, I, I kind of felt that way from the presentation, that we kind of knew the direction, but it wasn't crystal clear, so.
And I, I agree with you, and it's why I had asked the question the way I did as well.
No, it's a great question.
Because I, I have recollections of more specific requests of the previous school committees.
Yeah, and I actually asked the same question you did, Tina, as doing this for the first time from this, never having done it this way remotely and moving it up. Was, did we need to have the exact quotes? And so I would feel comfortable if we had that as well.
Okay.
Plus, I believe both Sue and Kristen would love to join us on the 22nd. I mean, just get that from their general body language, demeanor, everything. I mean, I can tell they are having a blast.
We are.
But with all due respect to their time, though, I do respect if they want to attend, that's fine. But I, I would speak for myself that I'm comfortable with their presentation, understanding what their direction is.
I agree.
As am I.
If you're coming to the next meeting with detail, your choice, of course, but I, I would be comfortable with or without them.
Well, then, I would like to make a motion that with further detail going to be made available to us on June 22nd, that we move forward our vote until that time.
Second.
Brent is second.
Brent seconded.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Brent?
Well done, ladies.
Yeah, Debbie, can I just say one more thing? Normally, we would have committee members here who worked on this because it wasn't just Sue and Kristen themselves who did all this wonderful work. So I'd just like to quickly name the people who were on the committee. So we had Michelle McCarthy representing the Borough School, Diana Parr representing the preschool, Matt Carroll, High School Social Studies, Dan Grady's High School Social Studies, Ryan Wolinski, High School Social Studies, Dan Williams, eighth-grade Social Studies, Julie Clow, seventh grade, Kelly Waite, sixth grade, ELA Social Studies, Julie Penelope Torrey, fifth grade, ELA Social Studies, Karen Washburn, fourth grade, Lindsay Morris, third grade, Jen Light, second grade, Laura Kolback, first grade, Teresa Calberhouse, kindergarten, and Lisa Lancaster, Kedafford Special Ed. So you can see we have the full range of constituents.
Well, a huge thank you to all of the members of the team. And before we let Sue and Kristen go, I just wanted to take a moment to just note that Ms. Rico, in addition to being our new department head and. Ms. Rico, in addition to being our new department head and shepherding this wonderful curriculum review report, is also one of the class advisors to the class of 2020. And since I won't get to thank her in person, I wanted to take a minute to thank Kristen and Christine Smith, the other class advisor. It's been a particularly challenging end of the senior year, and I happen to know as the, the mom of the senior class president, that you all have been on the phone and video conferencing with Diana and all four senior, all four senior class officers throughout the last 12 weeks, four months, however long we've been doing this, in order to get things arranged. And you've talked them through some pretty emotional issues. And my deepest gratitude to you all for four years of class advising some, these kids through some very challenging circumstances. So you've done a great job and they've been lucky to have you, Kristen, and also Christine Smith, and we're, we're blessed. We're really, really blessed. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that very much. And I will see you on Sunday from a distance.
From a distance. I wasn't going to get to speak with you personally, so I just grabbed my moment. So thank you very, very much.
Well, I'm incredibly proud of them and congratulations to the entire class of 2020. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Kristen.
And these ladies, it was their first time, Sue had partially led the ELA Curriculum Review one year, but this was their first time doing this together. So congratulations, ladies, for having this under your belt.
Well, they did a great job.
Well done.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. And you're welcome to stay and you're welcome to go. So you may have noticed that we have some guests who, some, some surprise guests who have joined us on the Zoom as well as we move forward in our agenda. We do have one other agenda item that we are going to discuss briefly, and that is the Student Opportunity Plan that's listed on our agenda, but we're not taking action on that. Could you just briefly speak to that, Dr. Verdas? And then we will move on to the fun part of our meeting.
Yes, the Student Opportunity Act was passed in 2019, and that was, that law implements the recommendations that came out of the 2015 Foundation Budget Review Commission. And those funds came to, 80% of the funds actually went to about 35 districts in the state. We all received some of those funds based on a formula to add to the foundation budget, which ended up being $79,000 for Foxborough. However, with everything that's taken place, whether those funds continue to come forward, it's questionable. We have to put together a plan, we have what's called a short form, to access those funds once they do become available. And those funds are targeted towards reducing gaps with some of our students that are in subgroups that are not meeting the same level of standard as maybe their peers, which is looking at students with disabilities, English learners, low-income students. And all those funds, we have to have a three-year plan to target towards anything that's an evidence-based program. So that plan we will put together, we'll need a school committee vote at that time that just says what we're using those funds for. They've also made it very clear, any of the work that we're already doing to reduce any kind of achievement gaps, that we are fine to continue to use those funds towards that, which is what we would do. But I'll bring that to you at a further meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to recognition of public service, the, the fun part of our meeting. So Ms. Lord, we are honored to have had you as part of our committee for so many years. And we have some guests who would like to acknowledge you and.
It looks like a motley crew to me.
It's a pretty good group.
I leave an hour later.
And I, I don't know who would like to start. I know Mr. Pearson has, has a few things that he would like to say. And we also have another special guest with us in, in the audience. Your son is here with us. So it's a, it's a good evening. So who would like to begin up there? Mrs. Spinelli, would you like to begin?
Always happy to begin. Debbie, I'm so happy that I'm able to be here tonight just to celebrate you, all your years of service, on a personal level, the amount of support that you provided for me as a superintendent and assistant superintendent and teacher, and actually as a parent, all those years. And especially just to acknowledge your just deep passion and love for the kids of Foxborough and the teachers in our district and all of the different wonderful programs with students that you've championed over the years and that, you know, it won't be the same without you, but I wanted to personally thank you on a professional level and a personal level for everything you've done for the kids in Foxborough. And I'm happy to be here and I hope my background out my front door at the cake brings you all some sense.
I wish I were there with you.
You certainly need it.
Social distancing with wine.
Or just me and Tom. And, and you know, Tina, if you, if you don't mind, I just want to say to everybody in the committee, all the administrators and teachers in the town and the parents and the kids, what you've been able to do the last couple of months has been absolutely amazing. And even though it's difficult and nothing is perfect, you've been close to it, I'm really in awe of everything that everybody has done. So I just really appreciate seeing from a distance how hard everybody is working to still continue to bring the best you can to the kids in this day and age. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Thank you for that. And thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Who would like to go next?
I think Deb, is that Deb Giordano? She had her hand up.
Deb Giordano.
Yeah.
We have our, our recreation representatives. I see Heather Harding and I see Deb. Deb, would you like to go?
Sure. First I have to say, bonjour, mademoiselle.
Debbie was one of my very first students I ever had when I walked into the Kern School. Very first year.
Yes. It has been all pleasurable trails since then. Debbie, Heather and I are here to thank you for your service to the Recreation Board. The word was already used once with Debbie Spinelli, is your passion and your commitment to the kids of Foxborough is truly a gift that you have, and it's a blessing to all of us that you share it with us. You've been a quiet but strong voice on the board. You've attended our events. You have always been a great supporter of the activities that Recreation does, the ideas that we have, though they may often be abstract. And what you bring to the table as well for ideas and things that you'd like to see done for the kids or with the kids in town. And we have been very lucky to have you on the board. We know, we know you replaced Vinnie, and now the board will send us somebody else. And it'll be big shoes to fill once again. And thank you so much for being on our board and for being my friend.
One of my favorite things I ever did with the Rec Department was painting the castle. Remember when we repainted the castle on the playground?
I do. Heather, I knew yourself.
Thank you so much, Deb. Heather, did you want to chime in?
Yeah. I did. There's not much I can add to what Debbie said, except that Debbie, you were a fantastic teacher when I was at Foxborough High School a long time ago. And you were on the board before I joined in 2008, but I, I don't know how you juggle it and do all you do and do it so well, but I just want to say thank you. And we're really going to miss you, but hopefully you will still come by and visit us and still come and help us at our events because we always count on you. Thank you for everything you've done.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Heather.
We love you.
Mr. Uden, would you like to go next? You look eager to speak.
Oh, I'm very shy.
We know.
Congratulations on your graduation, Steve.
Thank you, Bev. And I hope everybody likes the background I have of a cluttered office. It's virtual. It's, it's, it's a Zoom background. It's not really my house. So Deb, you're so much nicer. Bev, the thing I remember most, aside from the work that we did together on the school committee was pretty much every time, the first, the first two or three things we would talk about when we'd gather in person, not in any particular order, but was always my children, your children, our families. And as a, as a father, putting a child up on the dais in the next week for graduation, my last child, that always meant more to me than almost anything else we could do for our children in the community because you have a heart of gold and you, you really care. And, and I think that's in the DNA of everybody that's served on the board and currently. And, and I, I just want to thank you for being such a loving person. You've even checked in on me from time to time since I haven't been part of the board. And God bless your grandson and your, your son and your daughter-in-law and your beautiful family. And you're a lifelong member of the MASC, which means you can still pretty much park in front of fire hydrants or whatever that allows us. I just want to say thank and I love you. And you're one of the people that truly helped my parent, my, my wife and I raise our kids. You're one of the, the people. But we work in the background mostly, but this is what my wife and I have always dreamed of having as parents, is, is to raise kids with broad wings and, and the guts to fly with them. And that's part of what we have here in our beautiful town. So I love you and thank you. And it's good to see everybody else here on this Brady, but thank you, Tina, for inviting me.
Oh, thanks for coming, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Gardner, would you like to go next?
Before Mr. Gardner starts, I want to show him that this is for him. I have been cleaning out, but these are a packet of the agendas with all my notes on them. And on the back, my first 2004 note from my first school committee convention on the cake tied in blue and gold.
Does anybody else have that same history?
Bruce, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Tired to follow Steve Uden. He's one of the most creative and thoughtful guys I've ever met. First, I want to thank Mike Weber for NFCA, for putting this together. Appreciate the opportunity, Mike, and all you're doing in these tough times. Secondly, to Superintendent Spinelli, I just want to say it's great to see you again. I miss you. And I want to echo your comments that I couldn't be prouder of how the current board, current assistant superintendent, and especially the current superintendent are doing, keeping this district going so very strongly. I read a, a letter recently, I can't remember if it was in the newspaper or online, but it talked about someone who had just moved into town because of the schools. And I thought, I thought, you know, what a nice thing to say. And, you know, it, it's a really nice feeling, having served for, in my case, nine years, to look at the succession planning that we all do and to think about all the people currently on the board and currently in the administrative offices. And I know, Debbie, you probably share the pride I have and, and the special feeling that gives us. So thank you to all of you for what you do. To Chris and Steve, good to see you guys. Enjoyed our time together. And now to the lady of honor, Beverly. I feel like a son. I don't have quite as big a stack, Rich Pearson, of, of notes that Debbie has, but I have kept every single one of the ones from Debbie, our nine years together. You know, when I first joined, you were a mentor. You were someone who I established a keen affinity for together with people like Katie Adair. You and I and Katie had a strong impact on the future direction of the board for about a decade. When Katie retired and Tina came along, the three of us continued, I think, what was just a terrific direction. I share a lot of Steve's comments, the feelings that I have working with you, the way that my family got to know you and you got to know my family. As Steve said, Michelle is by my side while off camera, and she reminded me that I should make special note of all of your shows that we had the opportunity to go see.
Thank you. My last one was canceled because of, of the COVID.
There's always another.
Oh, well, it's supposed to go up hopefully at the end of November.
It closed before it opened, Bev. You've never been in a show.
I know, I know. It closed before it opened. It wasn't even my fault this time.
Nice. I heard Canfield though, good theater, man. The show will go on. So anyway, you guys know me, I could talk for a real long time. I won't do that to all of you. I, I miss you guys. And Beverly, this one's for you.
We're all jealous right now, Bruce. Don't tell us. I saw Mr. Connolly up there, last but not least of our Zoom joinees. Would you like to say a few words, Chris?
Yeah. First of all, thank you, Tina, for inviting me, including me in this. I wish it could be in person, but Zoom, Zoom's the way to go right now. I, I just really want to thank Beverly. One thing that I don't think a lot of people know is that when someone gets elected to the school committee, Beverly really takes them under their wing. She helps them. She'll be there to go over things with them. She trains you what you're doing. She's the nicest person and you can bounce ideas off of her. And she has a encyclopedia knowledge of Foxborough schools. So she can give you the history of anything and why it's been done and how it used to be done in Foxborough and how that's changed. And I just really, really appreciated getting to know all of you when I was on the board. And I know how difficult of a job it is. And for you guys to do this, and especially Bev, for you to have done this for as long as you have, it really talks about how good of a person you are. And you really made an impact with me, and that's why I wanted to be here for you tonight.
Thank you. And it will be a long time, Chris, before there are two teachers on, living on Granite Me, an activist and teacher, you, active, but I was on the school committee. I always thought that was kind of fun, but nobody ever picketed us. That's one thing that I can, can always tell all the future mass conventions, that I was never picketed. Many of them, many of them can't say that.
We might want to wrap this meeting up just in case anyone gets any ideas.
Wrap it up.
Just kidding, of course. Yes? Did someone, was someone chiming in? Yes, Debbie.
Yes, is that okay if I say one more thing?
Oh, please.
No, I'm so happy to be here tonight to celebrate Debbie and all her years of service. And it's reminded me that two years ago, right around this time, was the last meeting for Bruce Gardner, who had been on for nine years. And I had been, I was away and I couldn't participate because you people are still old school two years ago. And there was no, thing is remote participation. So I just wanted to make up for that and also saying to Bruce publicly, you know, thank you so much for all of our deep conversations and the support and I think that you gave me personally and professionally when you were on the committee. And these two people are great examples of how, you know, if everybody works together and, you know, it's, it's hard to succeed as a superintendent without everybody, you know, really working together and giving you the, the encouragement, but also the honest conversations. And these two people are people who did that for me. And I want to make sure I acknowledge Bruce. Two years, I made up for it, Bruce. Sorry, I was away, but that was retired.
I had to retire to have that happen, so thank you.
Yeah, I had to retire for Bruce to get his, his thank you. I'm glad he did.
Right. See, you're still giving to others, Debbie.
Brent, do you have anything you would like to add? I'm trying to make sure I get everyone on Zoom.
I'm going to second what Chris said, actually, because it honestly hadn't dawned on me to look at serving on school committee until I got cold called.
From?
And it wasn't a, it wasn't a solicitation. It was a soul-scooping, tell-all, two and a half hour conversation where she was just out and out vetting me in the sense that, you know, like.
I did a good job.
My educational, educational history and, and my family and my kids' experience with things. And it wasn't, you know, it was so, it was just so easy and conversational. But Debbie, jeez Louise, I don't think I've ever had an, an invitation or pre-engagement conversation that went that in depth. And anyway, I, I take it as a sign of your genuine love of education, genuine love of this town and stewardship of the work that you've already put in and you're hoping others will continue to put in in the future that, anyway, don't, don't stop doing that, please. You can, you can go out and retire, but don't stop nagging people because I think.
Oh, no.
Oh, good, oh, good. Because it makes us, I mean, honestly, it, 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 it makes us all better. And anyway, I, I, I think I've used all the words that Chris didn't use, but I think he said it better. So I'll just second what Chris said. Leave it at that.
Well, Brent, Brent, you may not know this, but I think the only person or the last person that was on school committee that Beverly didn't influence was probably Vin Igoe, right, Beverly? Igo, right, Bevy?
I mean, even Frank Malley was one of my former students. I mean, there are former students speaking to me tonight there in the room, there in the Zoom, Mike Weber. I mean-
We couldn't fit everyone on Zoom.
Right. The grid is only so big, man.
I know, the room's only so big. And on the advisory committee and a former student as selectman, I mean, it really has been a privilege. I must say, a more challenging privilege than I would have thought at times to be a member of the school committee. But what a joy it has been to see what a fine job Foxborough Public Schools do in raising up young people to become leaders in our own community. And that's what all of you are doing with your children. So thank you back. And thank you for the vote of confidence in you headed me in keeping me on the school committee for 16 years. Thank heavens for AA Milne, who got Winnie the Pooh to say, "I'm lucky to have something that makes it so hard to say goodbye." This is more difficult than I actually thought it was going to be stepping away. However, I do have your phone numbers and your emails and your addresses. So you're one of the Lord's chosen. You will hear from me again.
Well, I think there are a few people in this room who also would like to say a few words. And Richard, would you like to begin?
Sure. Well, I thought a lot about this, and I'm glad everyone is here that had served with her. And I think that I get emotional on these things because of the long history. They've articulated service well. So in 1977, I was in sixth grade, and she cast me in a musical, 1977. And in the musical, to put the musical on the stage, it was called So This Is Paris. And her and another teacher read every person's lines on a tape cassette recorder with a French accent so that we would all be able to do it right.
I had forgotten.
1977.
See, little things. Oh, boy.
And then, um-
I went home tired.
So that was, that was sixth grade for me in a musical. And then I had her in French, I think in seventh grade, because we had two French teachers at the time. And then in eighth grade, I still, I might have had you in French for eighth grade, I remember. But I do remember you adopting Bill in 1979. And then 1980, I hit high school. And I was then cast in another musical with Bevy. I was a puppet. But, um-
And he learned how to juggle for me, just for that musical.
And I remember Bevy talking all the time about Bill and celebrating-
And pronouncing it Bill.
Bill. Yes, she always said that to us. And teaching us in high school. And I had her again in high school as a student, too. So, uh-
I survived.
And then 10 years forward, I go from there to, I get a job in 1989 in Walpole. Today, tonight, she brings me the newspaper from 1989 that I was featured in the Foxborough Reporter.
That's wonderful.
She just brought it to me from 1989.
Well, I also had my own cut on Thursday at home. And look at it. It's called The Music Man. It's how he built the entire music program in that, in that community.
You are doing some cleaning.
I mean, and I'm still not through the papers.
You're still under, you've got three decades to go.
I'm up to 1989.
So that's 89, right?
I'm surprised.
So then I become assistant principal of Foxborough High School in 2000. And she shows up in my doorstep in 2001-
In the, in the office.
In the office at Foxborough High School and hands me some other article and puts it on my desk. And it sits on my desk at the school from back when I was a student.
Well, it actually, he had a little bowl haircut like this. His mother always had him in his little bowl, you know, bowl haircut. And he's juggling like this as a ninth grader on Foxborough stage. And I've sent-
All true.
...to Foxborough, huh?
Those are the pictures that we want.
Yeah, you should get all those.
I've got them. I've got them. I've got to get two more of my papers. I'm putting all my photos. It's literally, the photos are up to this high in the closet now. Because I'll never do anything else in the house if I start on my photos.
So that gets me to 2000 as assistant principal, right? So then, so then I decide to run for school committee, and I meet her again another 10 or 15 years later, whatever it is now, right?
And I didn't stop mentoring.
Well, so what it said to me as a person, is this a person I've come along with and talked to through all that time? And she's, uh, she's been thoughtful about me and who I am, thinking that. But educators do that for their life's work. So your life's work began with me in 77. And Deb Giadano before that. But what's very special about education and teachers is that the ones that are special, they sustain it for a very, very long time, very long time. And then you give it back as a leader. So just a huge thank you for sustaining, teaching, educating, and caring about people. So, thank you.
That's just beautiful, Richard. So well said.
Thank you. Pretty soon, I'm going to feel like I won't have to have a funeral. You're saying some nice-
Well, it's nice you can hear them this way, right?
Yes, it's better to be here than here.
Rob, that's a very hard act to follow, but you're up.
I was thinking the same thing. Thank you, yeah. So one thing I did want to tell you was I had reached out to our French exchange student that we had in the fall to try to get him to record something. And he didn't have a chance. He's very busy with something. But Antoine wanted to let you know how much he remembered spending time with you when they were all here last fall and the field trip that you went on with them, and that he was, he knew exactly who I was speaking of when I said your name. He's like, oh, yes. So he sends his thoughts and well wishes to you as well. I was going to try to say it in French, but I didn't, I would embarrass myself, and you would feel the need to correct me, and that just won't work for us all.
It's hard to let the government- Well, you must tell Antoine for me, please. I am planning on being in Paris next summer.
Okay, I will let him know.
Probably in August.
Okay, I'll let him know. Because he's, he's out of school now and everything. So, and I had no idea, as long as we have traveled in similar circles in Foxborough, I had no idea how much a Renaissance woman that you are. And I think we meet people in life, going back to what you said, that inspire us to continue to pursue things that we're passionate about, to not settle, to not become irrelevant, which is one of the things that's important to so many of us as we move along in life. And you are really one of those people that has maintained your relevance for yourself. And therefore, you're relevant and important to all of us. And it's really quite an inspiration to have known you for as long as I have, even though we didn't know we knew each other, and then to have worked with you and to just share so many things and interests with you across the board. So thank you for that. And I look forward to hearing and seeing and knowing you for many more years.
Oh, I hope so. Now, did you just pull the word Renaissance out of the blue there?
I did. Should I use the correctly?
No, because it collapses me 40 years ago, when I became the talk of the town when, as a single person, not only did I direct musicals, I traveled in the summer. And then I adopted a child. Well, in Little Foxborough, even everybody was talking. And one of, some of my high school students came up to me and looked at me and said, "You mean teachers really like children?" I mean, well, the Foxborough Reporter got a hold of it. And across the title of me adopting Bill and everything, it was called A Modern Day Renaissance Woman. So you have just collapsed me.
Wow, full circle.
That's what it's to say. It's the wavelength. It's the vibes. It's no wonder I can't-
Sounds like Rob should go to work for the reporter.
Thank you, Rob. Also, very well said. Good use of Renaissance. Dr. Berdos, would you like to say a few words? Want to give everyone a chance.
I'm sorry I can't serve you wine and cheese. I truly am.
When we think of someone and-
Why, why can't you? Why can't you exactly?
We are in a public building.
I'm not going to be on the school committee anymore, so I invite you to my house. Once it's clean.
To say that you've been dedicated and involved in this community is an understatement. We've heard so many different examples of that passion that you have for students. Being on the school committee since 2004, the second longest-serving school committee member we have, that's dedication. And your passion, you're a constant learner. We've heard a little bit about that. I'll never forget the day that you came in and you told me you were going to your tap dancing class.
Well, I had to improve my balance. I'm getting wobbly beginning, in the beginning of my eighties.
All of the things that you've continued to talk about, you know, just personal growth and learn, I don't think there's anything that you have not tried. And your genuine love for people. The first day that I walked into the office as assistant superintendent and you were there, you said to me, "I really want to get to know you." And you did. And you do that with everyone. And that's why everyone feels the way they do when they meet you, because of that genuine love and caring. When I think about your genuine love and caring for students, I won't forget one of the school committee meetings, and there were students, high school students presenting to us. And when we had the opportunity for questions, you started to talk about going back to a day way back in years past about how it rained, and it was the walk to school day. And my first thought was, that doesn't seem to connect with what we're talking about at the moment. Where, but I always knew that you brought it back. And it came back to the high school students before us, where the elementary students that were in one of the pictures on the day that it rained in walking to school. And you remembered those students. You were-
And the other thing that I remembered was Doc Demartis at one point had decided, had decided he'd go and check on them. Here, the students are walking with their umbrellas in the rain, and he's got his head out, sticking out of the car. And I actually, I, Rich, I had the newspaper and held it up in front of camera in the-
That's right, that school committee.
Remember that?
I do remember.
But there's so many examples like that of memories that you have of students that have come before us that show that dedication and love that you have for every student from the time that you were a teacher and hearing stories over the years, and for those that come before us and seeing your genuine interest in what they're doing and what they're achieving and where they're going and what their next step in life is going to be. The lifetime member for MASC, I know I'll see you at those conferences, and you will continue to learn-
I've already worried about our November convention next year.
And I don't think you've missed an opening day for school either. And I know how excited you are to be back with all of the faculty and staff on those days. So to say thank you seems so small and insignificant compared to the contributions that you've made over these many, many years as a school committee member, as an educator in Foxborough, and just your deep passion for everyone that comes along your path. They're so much better for meeting you and knowing you. And I know that you won't be far. So although it's your last meeting, I look forward to continuing to see you and hear about all the new things that you're doing. And thank you for everything that you've done, both professionally and personally. We're really fortunate.
Allison, I'm not sure how much there is to add, but-
I have a couple of things. My, I mean, I echo the sentiment that I've heard here this evening. And one of the things that's always struck me, I don't think I've ever been to a school committing, meeting that you weren't at. And I, you are the steward of our district every time a new employee joins the ranks. You are the first person to always thank them for choosing Foxborough. And it said-
Have other opportunities and offers.
That's right. But to have them experience gratitude as their first interchange with us and to have it be so sincere from someone who's so deeply rooted, not only in the community of the town, but the community and the commitment to the schools, is special. It felt very special to me when you said it to me. And as Amy said, you've continued to welcome me into every new role, and you've always encouraged me. And when I needed it, you're always there to do it. And you're just always a quintessential teacher. The first time you met my husband, you taught him how to feed the Christmas tree aspirin so it would stay alive longer. So-
And a spoonful of sugar.
That's right. And you invited us to, you know, to come to your home and celebrate Mardi Gras. And you're just, you're just that person who really does make everybody feel special. And I'll really miss those interactions with you. So please visit.
I can be, I remember, I'm a text or phone call away.
Oh, I know you'll keep texting. Please do. I like to see cats and other fun things. So please send, send me pictures. But, and keep teaching. I know you have lots that you'll continue to teach everyone, your grandchild, but all of us that are around you, because you will forever be a teacher. So thank you for everything you've taught us.
Well, give everyone a chance here.
No, I don't have a lot to add. I think a lot of accolades have been given your way. I know the policy subcommittee will never be the same without you.
But you know, one funny thing, I was on that policy subcommittee so long that I remember earlier this year, I went in and there was something new to be looked at for the subcommittee. And I said to Janet, "Oh, no, not some more of this. I've got an awful lot this week or so." She said, "Bevy, you're not on the subcommittee anymore." Because we got Brent. But that was my reaction to it. She just laughed. She's not on the subcommittee anymore. And I went, phew.
I think there's been very few people in this town have had the dedication that you have to the kids and to the program itself. And I think that comes through very strongly. And I think, you know, quite honestly, as a, as a parent myself with kids, I've gone through the system, I think that guidance really has helped this system become what it is. And I'm sure we'll guide it in the future as to where we go as well. So congratulations.
Thank you, sir. I'm not moving. You'll see me.
It's super hard to go last because there really isn't too much more that I can add except my personal thanks to you for your guidance and your advice and your perspective over my last eight years. I mean, I echo everything that everybody has said. And I think the most important lesson that I have learned from your example is to always put our students first. That that's what we're here for, is to make sure our students get the education that is appropriate and is the best possible one we can give them. And you have taught me that. So thank you for that, and thank you for all you have done. And thank you to your son, Bill, for sharing you with the students of the town of Foxborough for all these years. And you certainly are welcome to chime in if you would like to come up to the table, but there's no obligation to do so.
So-
Come on up.
So they, to the people watching at home, they did give me an out. They said I could zoom in. And then they said you could zoom in towards the end. But I said, I'll, no, I'll come in for the whole thing. So thank you to this group for giving me the opportunity to come here. I'm just happy to be here and I'm very proud of you. And I just wanted to show you my support.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, thank you for joining us. I told my sons that you were coming to support your mother and how I thought. That was just awesome.
Quit those teeth. You can tell he's working from home these days. Didn't used to go to the office looking like that. And I get Benjamin from eight to five almost every day.
Wow. Benjamin is lucky, and so are you.
Well, I'm a tired lucky by the time, five of four, I'm thinking, aren't they coming? And I now understand why many, many women used to be, it was suggested they have all their children in their early twenties. I'm a tired Grammy before supper.
Well, you're going to have a little more time to spend with Benjamin and Bill and Sarah. So, but, but their gain is our loss. And thank you so much for what you have done.
Well, I still, if any of you ever have questions or anything, just, just need a sounding board.
We know where to find you.
I'm a good listener.
Or an old newspaper clipping.
Or an old- And you know, Mr. Gallagher, the policeman? Well, when, when I was not needed as a foreign language teacher, I did teach in the English department part of the time. And I did creative writing as one of my things. And I still have a poem that he wrote. And I copied and published it. And right after that, he was playing football. And he's heading for the ground with this big mask. So I have, I have the two of them in juxtaposition, the football player and the sensitive poem that he wrote. I could, I could get the people to write things in creative writing. It was great. And I did tell you, I usually don't lie. But I did lie just a little bit during So This Is in Paris. So this is Paris. Because do you remember me having the can-can line? I had boys in white jeans and white, a kind of an old white neckerchief, you know, make little bandanas turn around. And we had them dancing in black light. And they said- said, because some of them said, "Yes, I'll do it, but as long as I don't have to dance." I said, "Oh, no, no, but you know, you have to, you know, if you go left, right, left, right, you know, you're kind of walking in rhythm and kind of like marching." We were almost to the end of one choreo for dance. And one of the boys looked at me and said, "We're dancing." And I said, "No, this is only movement to music. This is not dancing." Well, by the, by the time I turned out the lights and put on the black light and they're, and the audience is going wild, I was forgiven.
That's a great story. It looks like we have a new guest on Zoom. I see, uh, the new puppy. And I know your love of animals.
I haven't been able to meet the new puppy yet.
Four months old, Bevy. Let me say, congratulations. And if you want to come meet him, you can.
Bean is adorable.
His name is Bean. He's a good guy.
I'm coming soon to meet you.
Okay, you're gonna have plenty of time now. No meetings to prepare for.
Oh, thank you so much to everyone who joined us.
Steve wanted to say one more thing.
Oh, sure, Steve, please.
This is a personal question. You don't cle, uh, keep, uh, keep clippings of the police blotter, do you?
What? Who? What's his name?
He asked if you keep clippings of the police blotters.
No, I don't. I draw a line.
It's fine. Excellent.
Yeah. I do show some discretion upon occasion.
Okay, thank you.
On occasion.
Well, thank you so much to everyone who's joined us to recognize Beverly's public service. And thank you so much for coming, Bill.
Have a party when we can all get together.
I owe you a cake because we had cake when Bruce stepped down. But under the circumstances, I didn't think it was appropriate to bring cake. But I owe you a cake. So another time we will have cake and perhaps some wine. Lucky. And we're not in a public building.
Oh, wine's more important than cake.
So thank you again. So before we wrap up and before you make your last motion to adjourn, um, are there any other matters that we need to, to review?
I would just like to do a, a shout out to Jim DeVellis and the Orpheum Board for putting the pictures up on the side of the Orpheum with our seniors, their pictures and acknowledging them. We've had such great comments coming back for people that have seen their pictures up there, way to recognize our graduates.
Every once in a while, there was a small group of people standing just watching it scroll through. It's wonderful.
It looks fantastic up there. So really thankful to, to Jim and the work that he did with us. Um, it was, is all him and the Orpheum, but we just were able to help provide, um, the names and they did all the work. And it was such a, a wonderful gesture and the Alumni Association had a part in that too.
It was a great idea. And Jim, Jim got it, um, completely organized. And I, I believe our, one of our juniors, Ella Warrius, did all of the inputting, uploading and then put in all the names for, as a community service project. But it was great work by Ella. And, um, yeah, it's been so, such a great, uh, great way to recognize our seniors. And I think it's going to continue through Thursday. So, so keep looking. It's all alphabetical order. And it's all of, not just our Foxborough High School students, all of the Foxborough seniors are, are up there. So
Which is good.
Alphabetical order.
That would, that would have been, you know, in the, in the newspaper, if you did the addition.
Well, they are going to do the addition. Yep.
Because they're included in that.
They will be included in that. This is an extra special recognition, you know, under the, under the circumstances. And yes, I thank you for remembering that because it's a, it's very important. And I, I would like to just add, as far as graduation, um, I know it wasn't an easy decision and, uh, to, to, to go with a drive-through graduation, but I, I do believe that the administration, I know how much work went into it. I know all the options were vetted and thought about. Um, and the guidelines were analyzed inside and out to, to determine what the most, um, appropriate and safe celebration would be for our students and our families. And, uh, I, I just fully support what, what we are doing on Sunday. Um, I know the, the class officers worked very hard with the administration to put this together. And I think it's going to be, it's, it isn't obviously what any of us had hoped for. Um, but I think under the circumstances, it is the, 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 the best possible celebration we could have that ensures the safety and health and wellbeing of our students and their families and gives us all the opportunity to celebrate at the same time. And I appreciate your hard work on that. And I just wanted to say that publicly before we adjourn. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to add under other matters?
I'll, I'll piggyback off of what you just said, uh, Tina, but I'll add a, a slightly different twist, which is because I know that so much thought has gone into the ceremony and honoring the work of the seniors, I'm going to take a completely different tack. I'm a high school teacher. And just say, if there was ever any time, ever, in at least my adult history, to look at commencement as a beginning, it's now. And I understand folks in the class of 2020 care about it. And I've been part of so many graduation ceremonies, I can't count at this point. And they're all special, but let's not get past the core matter, which is the beginning, which is, is this. If there's ever been a week in our history, at least my history, where it's underscored that we need you, it's now. So 2020, thank you for your work, but God, we need you out there doing the work. Um, we need you out there using your education to make the world better and to bridge divides. And, um, I know you're hurting that you, you didn't get the, the proper full send off that you have. But you know what? What's more important are the next 15 chapters of your life. And, uh, I for one, am grateful for the work that you put in to get to this point, but I'm even more, ever more hopeful for what's next because the world sorely needs your, your shoulders, your input, your feet, your minds and your hearts. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you, Brent. That's so well said. And as a class of 2020 parent, I really appreciate those words. Thank you. Anybody else before we go? Madame Lord, would you like to make the motion?
I would like to motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Richard, would you like to second that? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of adjourning? Brent? Bruce, you don't have Time's zero, zero. Good night, everybody. And congratulations, Beverly.